Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which is established one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start up with will call John Estrich.
Here.
Chuck Campbell.
Here.
Bridgette Hayes here. You're on one.
Here.
Curtis Ford.
Here.
Okay, we have a call. First is approval of minutes of the regular meeting. From April 20th, 2023.
I make a motion that we approve it.
Turn my phone. John made a motion to approve the minutes.
I say.
Chuck seconds, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried. Next is approval of claims and payroll. For the claims, we have a total of $302,297.07. Gina, do you have any input on complaints?
I don't think so. I think I did email you about paying ratios first invoice for the preserving mainstream treatment with our edit funds because we haven't had the release of funds from the state yet, but once we get that release of funds, we can make a first edit. That's the only odd one.
And I see the DNR water meter was purchased for the water pump out of the golf course.
Correct. And delivered.
Hmm?
Sorry, and delivered.
And delivered, it's there. So it'll be, I think I read on this monthly report it'd be installed. And that's just so that we can count the gallons that we take from the lake and put in our retaining pond. It has been broken for many years. And then I saw something on here about street signs.
So Brent had to purchase signs from Clint for the progress of the industry.
Oh, those were in.
Purchased those signs.
I see. Thank you. All in favor of motion to approve the claims? Oh, and payroll, sorry, payroll. Payroll is $48,649.59 with overtime $230.88.
I make a motion that we pass the payroll claims.
Chuck made a motion to approve the payroll claims. Is there a second?
Yes.
John seconds, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried. So first item on unfinished business is department head liaisons.
I asked them to put on the agenda, department head and liaison. I'm asking the board to abolish the current liaison roles of board members. The reason I ask for this, some board members are abusing this role and trying to use their power to get to the department heads and trying to take control of departments. Liaisons are supposed to be set up to have department heads come to you and bring information to the board. Some people are doing what a crop line to try to take control, take them down control.
Is that a motion, or can you put that in your motion, please?
I make a motion to abolish the liaison role for Corkville jungle.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I say.
Any discussion? Would you like to enumerate who's abusing all this, girl?
Well, one is you going into the police department when the chief's not even there and going through the police cars and you already had money set up for the next day. And you knew you were going to meet with them at 10:30 the next day, but he took the money himself to go to the police car yourself and start going through your cars and doing things not in your control.
Was that it? Was that the only information?
Well, since last meeting, my phone has been blowing up night and day. I get messages when I'm at work. People complaining about how you treat their town employees, the way you treat people here at the town board meetings, cutting people off. And I've had phone calls, even some of the town employees are scared to say no to you to ask you anything.
Okay, so do you want to comment on the fact that I asked to talk to you last week to discuss what happened in the last meeting?
I told you.
You were busy for two weeks.
I was.
Every day for two weeks?
Yes, I was.
Okay. So the reason I went to the police department is because at the last meeting they asked for $33,000 for the vehicle equipment, so I went to go see myself the equipment and vehicles. I, that along with all town council members, are allowed to go to the police department and talk to any employee and ask questions at their discretion. That's your elected official decided, right? There's no need to get approval for that. I think I did my due diligence to do research into it and that interaction really helped me understand a lot more about the police department in a lot of ways that really helped me be the best official that I possibly can. So I'm sorry that you disagree with that and I really wish you would find some time so that we could sit down together and talk this out instead of hash this out of the public meeting. I think it would be better for the town if you carved that some time for me so that we could work better as a team. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I want to say something else, but I met with the chief and several of the police officers, one day last week, one of the days I visited. And they showed me through what they needed and everything they had on that list last meeting is exactly what they needed. They showed me they had no laptops in their cars, they have no radios in their cars.
Let's focus on my impressions instead of moving on to the next topic, okay? So you went to see.
You went up, you had a meeting set up with Chief Mitchell, correct?
No.
Yes, for today at 10:30.
I didn't set that up until this morning.
Okay.
So I didn't know we set up.
But you went yesterday knowing he was no media because he was off work being sick.
I didn't know he was off work.
He's been sick for two days.
I didn't know that. I knew he was sick on Tuesday.
You knew that when you got there, correct?
I called dispatch and I said, or I called the member and they connected me, someone opened the door and I went in and I said, hey, can I see the car? That's it. It just.
So when you got in the police department, someone finally let you in, correct?
Yeah.
And you knew then Chief Mitchell wasn't there?
Yeah, doesn't matter if Chief Mitchell was there, we're allowed to talk to employees of the town.
I understand, we are.
Okay.
But you sat in front of the T M.
The next morning. I didn't, I didn't set that up until Friday morning. All in favor of abolishing the department head liaisons? All opposed? Department liaisons are not abolished. Next topic.
Police department equipment needs, I'm saying, the list that Terry brought to the meeting last meeting. He showed himself in Mike's great with several police officers that were there that evening. All this stuff on this list is stuff they really do seriously need. And I'm making a motion, asking forward that we do supply these needs and grant them the money, $33,000, $236,000, so we can fully equip these officers and their cars with the things that they absolutely do need.
Is there a second?
Yeah, no second.
Chuck seconds. Now, sign of the discussion. So since you want to go through the list, I went ahead and did a little analysis of all the cars. So the police department did send inventories of each car. So we do have numbers that are confidential numbers and we're not going to disclose those to the public, but it is clear from the inventory that they did was is fruitful to know what's on hand before you ask for additional items. And the first item, they asked for nine traffic safety vests and they currently have a number of safety vests already on hand. So I would only assume that there would be some type of reduction in the number of safety vests since they have some on hand. They wouldn't need all nine of them since there's only nine officers. The next one, the flares, same thing. They have a number on hand and they don't need the full number here that would supply each officer with that. It's the same thing with clipboarders, notebooks, cramming tape. Each, if you add all the quantities of all their balances, there's, the majority of the lines have a number in it, which means we would have to subtract a number from this inventory list, which means approval of this list would be financially wrong to approve something that isn't needed based off of their own inventories. This, I want to bring something to your attention. The radar detector they have for $2,765 is called a Guardian radar. And the majority of the officers in the state and other departments have what's called a Python three. So I called Python three in Kentucky and got a quote for the number that they asked for and it is about $1,000 less than what their vehicle inventory list listed as a dollar amount and it's $1,000 less. So again, it would be wrong of us to approve a radar detector that is a lot more costly without some type of justification on the specifics of it, just to make sure that that's really the one that we should get, being that this Python three one is one that other majority of departments have. I think that just by that particular one, we should have them go back and revamp the list, decrease the number of actual quantities that they need. And then really, because the majority of these items are expendable stuff, not too expensive, so the $10,000 that was approved at the last meeting plus another $5,000 that Gina said she could post to a general miscellaneous supply count would give them $15,000. The other portion of what they asked for is all in the radar detectors. And so we could actually solve every line on this list except for the radar detectors in this meeting and then ask them to go back and take another look at the radar detectors and take a look at the Python three quote that I gave them and see if that's something that would fit and that would really save the town a lot of money. And then, you know, it's unfortunately, no one looked into any type of grants for any of this stuff. A lot of this stuff can be gotten through grants and we didn't ask that question. I would like to ask that question to see if they can find grants in other places that do support police things like Walmart, the Franklin County Community Foundation, State, Indiana Criminal Justice Institute, they give out grants for all kinds of police material. And I think that in order for us to do due diligence, I think that they need to look into that stuff. And the reason I say that is because it's not as if this is an emergency because clearly they haven't had a lot of these things on hand for a very long time. And that's, you know, unfortunate that they haven't come and asked for it, but I think that Curtis made a point at the last meeting is we just need to know an inventory. And that's why I also said, you know, I made a motion for $10,000 for safety equipment so they could buy that right away. I just, the other part is that there's not an individual cost for each one of these items, so we have no idea. There's a, it says for one item, it's just an item and then it has a dollar amount next to it, but it's, we don't know how many they didn't want to buy, so we don't know how much it is. We don't even know what it is. I mean, it's, this is a piece of paper with absolutely no invoices. So all of our other department heads, when they come to ask us for money, they bring an invoice and they tell us a justification on why they didn't do that with us. They just gave us a Microsoft Word document with dollar amounts on it. So I think that we deserve to know how much each one of these things cost individually. The other part is that there are some items on this list that might not be needed for the officers that are considered admin. I don't know if an admin officer requires a radar detector that's $2,700. If they don't pull people over, they're just administrative, does the town think that we should buy that? And I think the answer is no. But I think that's why a little bit more in-depth look at each one of these might be helpful. There's something on here about a key to a vehicle. I would like an explanation of what that's for. Why are we buying keys to vehicles? Don't you guys, I would only think that we would want to know why a key is needed to a vehicle. Was it lost?
I understood that it's been backup keys.
I would like an explanation from someone that is asking the question of, hey, I want you to buy those. Okay. That's my discussion part.
Okay, so you were there, correct, yesterday?
Yes.
Did you think you were in the interview, is that wrong? Okay, I hear.
No, they said, they said. No, this was, sorry.
Chief Mitchell brought it to the office, so I attached it to this.
Okay. So they do have an inventory, correct?
Oh, no. I just looked at my car.
Oh, you looked at my car.
Just, and there was very little, and they definitely supportive the majority of the stuff on here because it's, they're not equipped properly without a doubt.
Okay.
I just, it's unfortunate that we're getting all this now. I wish this would have been, you know, trickled in, you know, with each budget in each year. Obviously, all this stuff hasn't been lost in the past two weeks or a year. This is stuff that they've gone without for a long, long time and I don't like that. I would rather have our police department fully equipped in everything that they need, but that's not what we're looking at. We're looking at a huge list, so.
So Gina, this that we're looking at now, this did come from Chief Mitchell of what they have hanging.
This.
It's got the blue highlights.
Yeah, I just attached it myself.
That's fine.
So which officers are you referring to as being admin only?
Chief Mitchell and Assistant Chief Straight, well, at least Chief Mitchell, but I'm not sure about Assistant Chief Straight, but at least Chief Mitchell, he's at admin.
But he's also an officer that patrols too. He has his own crew.
Yes. Yes. Unfortunately though, because he hasn't, he drives an unmarked car and he does not wear a uniform in the state of Indiana, he can't make, what I have been told, that officers cannot make a traffic stop if you're not in uniform and you're driving an unmarked car. So I'm not sure how he would, I don't know if he pulls people over or not, or how that all works, for him at least. So I don't think he would need a radar detector, in my opinion, a $3,000 radar detector. I mean, I mean, actually, that's a good, that's leads me to another question. How many tickets have we given out? I don't know. How many speeding?
They don't have it, I can't give, I can't give speeding tickets, so.
Yes, they can. There are other ways that police officers can give speeding tickets. It's just a whole lot easier with a radar detector, but I guess my question would be, their monthly reports don't include how many speeding tickets they give out. And so wouldn't that be nice to know? If we're going to spend $16,000 on radar detectors, how many, how many do they give out? I don't know.
I would love to see a police officer fully able for speeding and not showing proof on the radar detector that I'm speeding.
I've, I've been told that they're able to in some way and I'm sorry, I don't know the specifics.
Well, I can look at somebody, you can look at somebody, say, keys are fine.
Yes.
You know, but you can't.
But you can't really.
If I can court people that have disability, right?
I'm not an expert.
Or if I said, and the, you know, the defense attorney or whatever, if they even need a defense attorney or something like that, if you ain't got proof, if you're only going by your version of someone's speeding and you don't have how many miles an hour that you're willing to speed on that, I think it's going to be hard to prove that part.
I don't discount that the patrolmen need radar detectors, absolutely, 100%. I'm just saying that it might be something that we consider that the administrative top of, you know, Chief Mitchell who's at the top, maybe he doesn't need one. Maybe we can save taxpayer dollars by not spending a radar detector on him since he drives into our car and he doesn't wear a uniform. I'm not sure how many times he's pulled people over that would need a radar.
They do what you're saying, they're not wearing a uniform, probably.
He doesn't, he doesn't wear the uniform. He has tacks and a shirt on, and a coat. That's not the uniform. The uniform is what the officers wear though. It's either black or blue.
The wearing officers.
Right, the patrol. That's correct, the patrol. They wear the blue or black pants and whatever matching shirt and the vest.
Got you.
That's the uniform.
Okay.
Which they're allowed to do, I'm not saying they're not allowed, I'm just saying the Indiana law says if you drive in my car, which they both do, and they both wear the same, I've been told that they have to have a uniform on to pull someone over to make the traffic stop.
I don't know about that. I've heard this story in the past, it has nothing to do with our department, but for State Trooper two, he has to put on his State Trooper cap when he gets out of his vehicle or anything he does. And I don't know if that's true, I don't agree with that.
I'm sure that's just.
You know, maybe you're kind of hearing something along the same lines as far as uniforms, you know, because if someone pulls me over.
Well, I've heard it from three high-ranking officers.
Okay. If someone pulls me over and they've got the lights and I pull over for them, I thought if I'm on my car, I could probably get away with keeping, keeping driving for a while.
I don't, I'm not saying that.
Sort of scenarios, I'm just saying, and when that guy gets out, that officer gets out of the vehicle, comes walking up to me, if he's got a badge on, with a badge on or a badge, that a bit of arms hands of a police officer, that's good enough for me to talk.
So.
So I just, I don't know.
Women, women, especially, not a, or fearful, or cautious.
So my opinion is that through the whole of the town council to become a high-level oversight and I will get to the point where we're going through island by island and then making calls to verify which I'm just, I mean, I work in contracting, there's a difference between the law tools and, you know, the RIOB tools and I have a private tool which I want to use, and some people may not like that practice, but I do. And I know with Brent, your customer, he has a private software that he uses it, it is sometimes more expensive than another piece of equipment, but our department is there for a reason, they have that equipment and we're on high oversight. And the issue that came up last meeting is still something, you know, I would like the board to consider is we didn't judge for it last year. I agree with you to be able to realize that a lot of this equipment is needed. You know, is there nuances with the keys? Yeah, we're getting a $300 request, that's very small and it very risky of things. So I don't want to get to the point where if we can $300 request or ask them to go back and choose different brands, which are on the research one, we hired to do that job. So I would just question, where would the additional money come from? Is there, is there an option where we could fund this this year instead of judging for it last year?
What do you need the parking meter money?
So when I was looking at that, and Bridgette did mention in general, there's a miscellaneous operating supplies, there's also small tools and equipment I could use. The radar guns themselves, I did appropriate some on a riverboat, just as backup, so we could use that if council wishes to move forward. And I already did the additional preparation, I did advertise for that, but I have to public hearing next week until I can get that proof from the state.
Well, when we take these, my main concern is the safety of the officers. You know that.
Yeah, that's why we.
We all feel that way.
We approved that $10,000 last time because of that.
Yeah, so traffic vests, I guess they all already have a traffic vest.
No, some do and some don't.
Okay.
Not nine, but.
Okay.
I mean, that's what they.
You know, I mean, I would have a hard time living with myself turning down. I know you're forgetting some things that are needed, we talked about that, safety things. I would have over radio one of these vests, $15 a piece, maybe a little more, but anyway, I've had a hard time going home and sleeping if one of our officers got struck by a vehicle because he didn't have a fluorescent yellow overreception vest on. That's why I'm a little concerned in this sort of stuff, like radar detectors, yeah, you know, I, I'm not a little concerned about that at the time. I think we should be concerned, I'm myself a concerned with safety equipment, and also some of the equipment that you, that they do need to do their jobs properly.
We approved that two weeks ago. We already approved it.
So why are we going back over it?
Because I'm asking, all these items on here are not included in the $2,000.
Okay.
But they have, many of these cars, most of these cars don't even have one more radar. If they had to do a suit or something.
Radios are not in this quote.
What?
Radios are not in this quote.
That's what I'm saying. If you're going to take away something out of these, we need to add radios to these too.
I never said to take anything away, I just said to take a closer look exactly. I don't think it's a good idea that we purchase more, that we authorize the police department to purchase more items than they actually need. And this inventory that Curtis suggested last week that they did is a great tool to show that they have a lot of this stuff already, but if this, if this board's going to authorize them to purchase more than they need and purchase items like radar detectors for officers that don't really need them, then I think that I just.
We don't have a single police officer on our board that does not need a radar detector and that needs a crew.
I disagree.
Good. Fine, agree to disagree, you go. That's my opinion too.
We set a precedent if we let a lot more than they need, but you made a motion, right, to improve the whole thing as is with no questions asked? Is, and you seconded it, right?
No.
You didn't second it? Did anybody second it? Did you second?
I actually, I did second it. And then you asked for a second.
Okay, right, then I call for discussion, okay. So all in favor of approving, I'm sorry, John, I'm sorry, of approving this list as is, the $33,000 for all the things they asked for? All in favor?
Gina?
One more time.
I didn't get, do we have enough, do you have enough money in budget to buy everything on this list?
I mean, I can buy it, yes.
Okay.
It's not a matter of whether we have the money or not, it's a matter of is it the right thing to do for taxpayer money to use it on stuff that they don't need? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? They can buy everything on this list? Next.
Department head terms. I'm asking the board to make a motion to make department head terms, three-year terms and not just a year-to-year term, starting immediately and first term in December 31st, 2026. This would include town, yes, proposition and timberwork position and all department heads. All appointed positions. All appointed positions, yes.
Is there a second?
And all paying permanent positions, right.
And you're looking at the store immediately, correct?
Immediately, yes. And the first term will begin December 31st, 26.
2026, huh?
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have something to put in on this. So I used to have a job where I wasn't actually appointed, but in a way it was an appointment because from year to year, every year, the postal service, when I worked for them, did a thing called a metal count. And I did not know, none of us knew how good of a metal count we were going to have or how bad of a metal count we were going to have. You know, everything we did was counted. You know, everything we did was counted. And so I went from working five days a week, getting paid forty-six hours a week, and if I had a bad metal count, I could be dropped down to forty hours per week and working every Saturday, working six days a week. So when you're in a situation like that, yes, I still had my job. That's, that's what's different. But when you're in a situation like that, you can't really plan for anything for the future, because it's like, I'm making minimum this year, next year I won't be making crap, you know? So, the department had to even face a more serious challenge. Because they could have a job and then the following year not have a job. And I think that's a pretty scary, uh, worst situation, if you put it, yes, they do. That taking the job. But still, I think the town of Brookville should be a good employer and be a good place to work for. And I think it's up to us to ensure that that happens. It's our responsibility as a council to take that, to take that down. That's all I have to say about that.
Have you asked the town attorney if this is legal?
Well, I have not.
I don't think it is. I think they have to be appointed every year.
Doctor and break it back to next year.
I think mentally it would have to be, have to follow the election cycle, there's a change in the majority. Did we technically could have last year appointed everybody to end of the year without you and Bridgette being on board? Now, let's figure out the journey for the following years, as long as the board doesn't change. So you might have to scale it back.
Two years.
To a two-year.
That's better than a year to a year. I would like Chuck to say that, right now they have no security whatsoever. They might have a job today, but come January 1st, they might be out of a job.
Does this really involve force appointments too, Brett?
Or I would just put all, all the paid appointed positions, sorry. That way they're going to have job security. I mean, if I went to Honda every day for a year and I didn't know I'd have a job next year, that'd be on my mind constantly and I wouldn't be able to focus on my job.
Yeah, I agree with that. I do see a point of three years maybe being troublesome, because that criteria that would eventually carry over to the board.
I think that before this board votes on that, that you should consider that we need to talk to them first.
I have a problem with that.
I also think that if we're going to not have a attorney present to answer immediate questions, then we should read, either she wants contract or she's here, or it's on the table, which is now being here half taken and ready.
She's available by email at all times, so.
I would still like to have a attorney present.
But since she's here, that's.
Correct.
Can we just talk about one thing at a time? If you want to bring that up, can you just put that on the agenda for next time?
Do you want, would you consider any of your motion to be entered towards 2025?
Yes.
So we made two-year motion, the board's.
Yeah, I'm.
Two-year, no, two-year motion, but cutting the time back to two years.
I'm in my motion, make it back to two years. And we talked them in and she said, we know it's legal, we'll go ahead and move forward.
Is there a second on, I'm sorry, is there a second on the amendment to amend the motion from three-year term to a two-year term ending in 2025?
I'll say it.
Any discussion on the amendment?
Does that vote before we know it's legal?
I said during my motion that we will move forward with it after we've talked to Lynn. Since Lynn says it's legal, we will move forward with it.
I don't, I don't think a vote should be taken before we find out the legality of it. I, I don't think two weeks is going to make any difference.
Okay, I don't have a front table till next meeting.
Okay.
There's a motion on, on the table to amend it from three years to two years, is there a second?
I disagree.
I'm sorry, I forgot. All in favor to amending the motion, this is not approving the motion, this is approving the amendment of the motion from three years to two years, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, so the amendment just passed, so now the motion is. Now we vote on the motion of appointing department heads for just two years, ending in December 2025. There's already a second. There's been some discussion, any other discussion on that amendment?
I just want to reiterate, very technical voting, so I don't know the legality of it.
I agree with you, John. I think the past way of making, we approved motions dependent upon certain requirements. Those are a way that this motion can be reworked.
I did, I said.
Depending on.
She said it's legal, we'll move forward with it.
I just caution this board from approving something that we don't know is even legal. We approve things that are building permits, depending on the county approval, not whether something's legal or not.
It's subject to if it's being legal.
If, it would be more prudent, because this is not an emergency question that we table this and let Lynn give us a legal opinion first before voting on it, it's it's improper for this board members to be asked to vote on something that we don't even know is legal or not.
We were dealing with the historic district right now, and that's a troublesome situation. And that came from a knee-jerk reaction of a previous council. I would really like to get away from knee-jerk reactions, and something like this, there's no harm in waiting.
Right, I agree with you. Okay, I, I'll remove my motion and we'll table it till next meeting.
Motion is now revoked. Next.
I want to skip number four for secretary position at this time. Number five, I'm going to report as a enforcement officer.
Hold on. The next thing on the agenda is police department secretary position.
Yep.
Can we please talk? I'd like it addressed this on the agenda since you put it on.
Okay, okay.
Well.
Just a reminder to the public, we voted on this two weeks ago, we voted, voted it down until the budget hearing, that's coming up in a couple of hours.
And what happened yesterday when you went to the police station?
I knocked on the door, I was there, I had to call another.
There was no secretary sitting at secretary's desk.
There hasn't been a secretary there since the beginning of 2021.
It doesn't matter.
Or 2022, sorry, 2022, right?
So it was all over again. For secretary.
So, can you give us some more reasons versus our conversation to explain why, why is this happening?
I haven't gone here because I know from my personal self that I went to the police department and I seen all the paperwork stacked up, but they don't have time to do it, if they have a secretary that can do secretary work, they could keep it up.
Once again, my problem is this, and it was the former council, I don't have anything to do with the former council, but once you start doing things like this, rearranging the budget after the budget was approved, it's a very slippery slope and it's taxpayer money. If we want to deal with this, when we do next year's budget, I'm fine.
But go around the police department as it should be and inside the office.
I would be more inclined if this was something that just happened, but everything's been running since, when Gina?
I think Officer Lackey was on desk duty for a while last year, so maybe till September of last year.
I believe both of us should be for one to serve to that capacity.
You want, so you're willing to take one off of the street so that he can step in there?
Just as a reminder, we, the, the past boards have increased the salary of the police chief by 15,000 over the last two years.
But you want to take him off the street so he can step in there?
I'm not taking anyone off the street, I just wanted to put a fact out there.
But if you want.
The salary has been increased by $15,000 over the last two years.
I think all salaries were increased.
No, his was increased by 11,000 in 2021.
Are you saying that his salary that was increased?
Pardon?
Or are you saying that his daily salary that has been increased?
That's the most significant, no, that's the most significant increase, it was a huge increase, it was like 20% and everyone else got, I think, three.
Okay.
So I don't have to do the secretary position, why Terry?
It's just a fact, I just wanted to remind the public, remind everybody on the board what the previous boards have done since three of us were there.
So since he received a raise, he really doesn't have a right to a secretary, basically, is that?
I didn't say that, again, I was just stating a fact.
Okay, I'm stating a fact too, that he was denied his last meeting for a secretary because I guess it wasn't budgeted for. But when we step back, he wasn't here during the last budget hearing to ask for a secretary, to be budgeted for.
He had assistant chief that was more than capable presenting a budget, which he did. And he did not ask for a police secretary. We do have confidence in our assistant chief, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, good.
You don't seem to have a lot of confidence in a uniform, you were.
I didn't say that.
Earlier.
I didn't say I don't have confidence in him, I stated a fact.
Yeah.
Earl, did you ever motion to?
I made a motion to let Terry outside for a secretary and bring it back to the board.
I. You made a motion for a secretary.
Yes.
That's right.
So if you don't, you're going to take an officer off the street, say you don't owe him office, same thing as these people that don't want to back the police, they're going to defund the police, that's what you're doing and basically without saying a word.
That really upsets me, your saying of defunding the police.
Well, I have to know, I'm giving them the need.
Let's try to keep this in, in terms of government instead of in terms of politics.
Well, so the other option that I do see is he can pull an officer off the street. Because I don't feel people, I feel if they go to the police station, there should be someone there to address their concerns.
Chuck, if you had to say a law police secretary, why didn't you push in to hire one in 2021 when the last one quit?
He, he was, he had a secretary.
No, he didn't.
What was the officer pulled out to do?
She quit, I think she ended in 2021.
2021.
Beginning of 2022, I don't think.
Okay, well, I didn't.
There was an emergency that.
I didn't know it was a problem until he went on personally.
Which is, the point is, is that, I mean, he hasn't had one for a while. There's no reason why he can't wait until the budget process where we all talk about all the employees and all the positions.
Was your, was your intent to make that part-time position, or was last time we made a full-time position, or was?
Part-time, thirty hours per week, question?
I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried, he can hire the secretary. Next on the agenda, department budget. Nope, I'm sorry, ordinance enforcement officer.
So I've talked to Terry about this since I've been on the board here. And I see different things, he showed me different things going on in the department by appointment, I've talked with him, I didn't just go in and go, mom. And enforcement, ordinance enforcement officer is something that the town needs. I've had conversations with Randy Bollos in Connerville, police chief, and he says there is actual full-time enforcement officer, so they stay busy. And Brookville, a lot like Connerville, a little bit smaller, yes.
A little bit smaller?
Yeah, a little bit smaller.
Do you know the population of Connerville?
And.
It's 11,000, we are 25,000.
Enforcement officer is needed, even if it would be added to a meter made to it, so they do. Do the meter made and do the enforcement enforcement? So I'm asking the board, which is considered an ordinance enforcement officer for Brookville?
Now, again, I'm not defunding the police. But I don't think that anyone associated with the police department should be code officer. We've got a PR problem with our police force right now, it's not their fault, but it's out there. And I don't think someone enforcing codes should come from that department. I think it's bad. People, people did not like the blitzes last year that I talked to, and people were upset about police coming around looking for those. Now, I do believe that codes need to be enforced, but I just don't think that the police department should be associated with. Prior to Terry taking it over, we had other people do it, and it worked pretty good.
Well, I'm not saying it has to be a work of the police department, I'm just saying it's an enforcement officer. Someone that can enforce the orders. I'm not saying it has to be a bad police officer to do it.
Well, I think the meetings that have been occurring on Tuesdays is trying to address that situation. Okay, so it's already words to try to figure out how to do it. My wife and I drove around town, because in the informational meeting at Third Place, a bunch of people talked about derailing properties. My wife and I could only find about three or four, and maybe, you know, I'm not a professional at judging incorrect properties, but I, I think it looks pretty good around town. You know, there's a capital problem, property, but with the percentage would not even be 1% if you went that way. So I don't think it's an emergency that we do a code enforcement officer now and there's a committee already looking at this.
I know there was a committee, but I didn't know there was a committee that interviewed, I wanted to inform you about it.
I, I said it at two meetings, the past two meetings.
No lie, told me about an enforcement officer.
It's a meeting to look at codes and revamp or figure out their way, I said it at the last two meetings.
What's the, what's the update, I can be up for the updates? Chuck, do you have a date, or do you have?
Can we, can we just?
No, I have my own work for some meetings.
Yeah, right. Earl, do you have any?
No, I have my own thing, I know, it's, it has ordinance being a two, that's all I know about. What's discussed or what we come up with that, hopefully.
We have, I, we have shared between Tim and Jess and the chief how ordinances are currently being done, we talked about how different ways that we can share information and provide updates in this meeting or to each other to make sure that there's follow-up with citizens that complain. I'm just, I'm learning a lot, really, and I target my head around what I can and cannot do, but I, I did get the code from the county. I've got a bunch of codes that apparently aren't in any code that, that are just kind of out there, again, I'm just currently trying to figure out what the problem is, because it's not that simple.
Also, wants to, wants to figure out what codes we have, if we need any different codes, we're going to publicize them much better than they are now. That's, it's not a quick process.
Right.
It's so, there's, how many code books did we see at the last meeting on them?
I think, I think Tim said there's four different ones that he uses. So, it's, it's a complicated thing.
There, I'm sorry, I did not understand that just now. Tim said that there are. There, I'm sorry, I did not understand that just now. Tim said that there were four different codes that he's-
Codebooks. So he's got the town book, he's got a county book, he's got the old town book, and I think he's got the old county book. And then there's a stack of about twenty different pages that are older ordinances that I don't know over in any, and so-
Don't know, don't listen to him.
I'm not sure myself. I, again, it's, it's a little complicated. I, I-
Well-
I don't have a report because I don't know what to say, because it's a very complicated thing for me right now.
So I will say, I've been here about six years, and the first two years, or the first four years of working here, we did the, or Tim was the, we got it before. Town level. It, it's worked better since the police has been on this, been more people, it's been a crowded, maybe the reason we're seeing less probably being issued because Terry had a bit of a complaint over the last two years. I don't know that we need a full-time ordinance officer, but I do like the idea of the meter made or someone to collect coins. In addition, because I do think it takes off, takes time with the police department. I just assume you're the leaders honestly versus doing that.
So as far as I know, before Tim did the codes, it was, it's always been done by the police department. They've always done it, and with the officers that they've had. And it, I mean, it's a, I've been told by other boards that they got their own officer to do just that, is to, to be that extra person to do code enforcement. So we didn't have a separate person, but it was in the police force because code enforcement is not a full-time job in a small town like this. I disagree with you, Earl. Connersville is, I don't know how many times, I'm not really a mathematician here, but eleven thousand people versus twenty-five hundred. A full-time person is, I don't think is necessary. Again, I think it's a misuse of government funds to do that. I think that the police department should do it, and they are, and I, I don't know how you make a decision or how you make a assessment of it. Things have been cleaned up. I haven't been around to see that. It would be nice if we knew what was being cleaned up, if we knew what violations were out there. If we could somehow see some kind of summary of the work, all the wonderful work that's being done. Hey, we cleaned up six or so properties. Everybody saw the coast in Connersville. I was impressed with it because they said, hey, we did this many violations and we cleaned up this many properties. That was tangible to me instead of a subjective view of driving around, which is something. But we don't get any information about code enforcement or anything at this level, nor do the people even know what's being enforced. You know, what is the major problem in town? I don't know. Hopefully the police do know, but they're not telling. I mean, they're not reporting that. I think it'd be a good idea if they did. That way you could all celebrate together instead of just my opinion versus yours. We could actually see numbers in my case, but I don't think an ordinance officer is, is needed. And so, but can you read a motion on this?
Let me be clear on this. I never once said it needed to be a full-time person doing this. I just said ask him for an enforcement officer. It can be twenty, twenty-five, thirty hours.
Could you put, could you put that in front of the motion?
I'll make a motion, enforcement officer, subject to whatever hours requested in the work.
Can we stay? I know there's a motion on the table. Must not make a statement while there is a motion.
Go ahead.
Okay. I just want to clarify what Earl just said. So when you're, you did, somebody said something that he heard us about collecting meter money. Would that be the, also the responsibility of a code enforcement officer?
That would be my preference, yes.
At part-time?
Yes. You don't want to take an officer off the street and do it. You don't want to pay somebody full-time to do it. If somebody hires someone that's willing to go at part-time and please collect the meters or whatever, bring it back to the town.
Again, I don't think this is a good idea that we vote on a brave new position for the town without a job description in front of us. This is all stuff that you have to do beforehand. You make a job description, figure out the duties, responsibilities, where they report, how many hours.
Earl, would you be, would you be able to, you and Terry getting information perhaps from Chief Bolos or Connersville, that bear your top search and what you present, so we can have a little more commission on?
Yes, I will, I will.
Uh, this apparently isn't anything this board considers, but did we budget for this?
Clearly it doesn't matter.
I, I don't want to be like a congressman and just start spending money that's not even there. We can't print. Let's wait until budget time if we want to add people.
There's a motion.
I kind of thought you were Republican, Earl.
I am Republican, yeah.
There's a motion. Let's keep this governing instead of political, please.
I don't want to.
Uh, there's a-
Well, he told me-
Okay, you guys, you guys, please, let's keep this to governing. Please, gentlemen, gentlemen, you're out of order. Where's my?
Where's your-
You're out of order. There is a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Clarify your motion.
Sorry.
I will run my motion. I will be, I will get with Terry and I will get with Bullock, chief, police department, and I will bring it back.
With the job officer.
With the information.
Next topic, Earl.
Department budget. No, I'm not asking for it today. I'm asking that in the next budget hearing that we set a budget for each department, for them to be able to spend it the way they need, what the needs they need.
Is there a motion off the table?
Sure, I make a motion, asking the board to put department budget for each department on the next budget hearing.
Can you be a little bit more specific? I-
I'm asking for-
I think-
The department, we, we'll get with the departments.
Earl, if there's any way that maybe you and I can talk after, instead of making motions about this kind of stuff, since you and I haven't been through a budget hearing with this council. I, there's a lot of things that I think it would benefit the town if we talked about it before we put it in front of the board to decide something. So we kind of have our ducks in a row.
I'm also good at discussing. I'll listen here a lot.
You do. That's what I want to do.
Yeah. Transparency is what it's all about.
Okay, could you be more specific about the plan, the procedure you'd like to do for the budget hearings? When, when to do, what do you like to meet, how, how it all?
How exactly, what's happening, I do not know, but what I'm asking is, we get with the department heads of each department and set a budget for each department for each year, so they can have a certain amount of talent coming to the board every time they want to ask for a budget. Then if they need anything on top of that, then they can come to the board and ask for it.
Gina?
Yes.
I have not sat through a town, but a hearing before, but isn't that kind of what it goes?
So honestly, I believe our budget hearings are pretty new.
We just started about two years ago.
We just started doing it in twenty twenty one.
Ah.
Honestly, it's a work in progress. I am willing to set up however anybody wants to do it. I would like a little bit more than just one hearing. I would like, in my mind, a meeting with department heads to get their want and wishes. Then be able to meet with our DLGF rep, and then to have another budget hearing with all of council. That way you guys can say yes and no depending on what she says.
That's kind of what the county does now. They have their department heads, elected officials come in and discuss their needs and how it relates to last year's budget and everything, and then they have a hearing. They decide, they know how much money they have, how much they can spend, and they go about it that way.
I think that's a good idea, yeah. The only thing I think to remember the last couple of years is just, we've had them, like the first year was kind of, that was my problem. It just wasn't planned well.
It was, it was your fault.
Well, it was new to me, basically. I had always worked with another council member on the budget that would, we never went straight too far from them, was really concerned with the budget. The second year is a little bit better, but I think there needs to be more than one. Because when we meet before, I meet with the DLGF rep, I, I can get an idea of what those estimates will be, but she can show me on paper where we're at. And I think that would be more helpful to be able to circle back around and have that final meeting prior to adoption. But in my mind, another thing is, some departments have set appropriations anyway, line items. However, the larger items are what kind of varies from year to year. So sometimes public safety, for example, we kind of maybe want to build that up if there's one day you spend a year in that certain year. That way we can look forward to the following budget year and say, oh, we got a ladder truck payment coming up. We might need to pull twenty-five, thirty thousand out of that boat. It just varies.
So I think I do agree with Earl, where I think the department heads need to have department budget being changed. Because for my, for my change, we set the budget with the department, but there's still, if you don't change by the department, what they have set.
Right, yes.
So Gina and I spoke about this earlier today, and what the county does, and what I think Gina's ready to do, is once the department head and Gina and myself sit down and go over their initial request, Gina puts it into the budget where it fits. She talks to DLGF, and then prepares books. Whether, she prepares books for all of us, just like they do for the county council, and then we make decisions on each line. And once the decision or the motion is made on maybe something special, she will casher that motion on one piece of paper, and it'll be the budget decisions for that year, and then we'll all sign it as part of, just, it's not, it's not an ordinance or anything, but just so that we all know what was agreed to at the budget hearing, and the public will know as well.
So the issue, how about that, is that you're the presiding officer, meaning you provide the meetings. I think it's presumptuous of you to assume that you are in a, leaving Gina and the department heads to set their budget before you do it.
I'm not, I'm not-
That's just what you said.
I'm not setting their budget. I'm just meeting with them.
Yeah, but it's presumptuous of you to say that-
It's part of my job as the council president. It is. It's, it's in, it's in the municipal book that's put out by the Accelerate Indiana-
It's not part of your job. You're the presiding officer of meetings. You have no other authority other than that, right by board, to which we not hearing then.
I disagree, and I'll find a reference first, because I really did read it somewhere, because I was like, oh, I guess Curtis does the budget all the time, because I didn't know.
The board will offer us to be, and what other board would do that? As should be in this case. They, they probably will meet you, but it's presumptuous of you to assume that-
I, I really did say-
The board has no opinion of that.
It wasn't a presumption. I, I'm positive everybody, I just don't have a reference with me, and I will, I'll, I will try to find it. That's the only reason why I said it. I'm in the town, town building very, very regularly, so didn't think anybody would be interested also, but I really did read it somewhere, and I will, I will find, I will try to find it.
I would make a motion that prior to her meeting with the department heads individually, that she notifies the board and the board has consent of the tag names that she had with the department heads.
What did Earl say?
I said I gave a motion that prior to her meeting individually with the department heads outside the board without prior consent, that she has to consent from the council to meet with us specifically.
To meet with them, what? Are you trying to say I can't meet with the department head without asking permission?
I am.
Are you, you're talking-
Are you kidding?
Now, I talk in general. If you assume that your role extends more to the presiding of these meetings without going to guarantee by council.
It was just a budget thing.
I would like to limit your authority, your, well, you think your authority is, to that supposed to council meeting. Will you give that authority that's fine?
There would be no authority in any budget meeting. I would just be there to help the conversation go. I would decide nothing and say that.
I think that would be hurtful.
I would not limit anything. It's just a conversation, but I think that your motion is completely out of order to try to limit me, to, to talk to town.
Didn't he say that Earl cannot talk to Terry?
That's right. That's what he's saying. If he's, no, I think his motion is to limit me.
How's it function if we can't, if I can't go to the street party, sit down and have a cup of coffee with Brent and talk about things?
Does that-
I don't want to ask permission. It's like this historic district. I don't want to ask permission to do anything. Anybody in the public can go in, talk to Brent at any time you want to.
The issue, how to talk, so the issue is that you have series of meetings recently where you, you have dictated three pages of items that you want Brent specifically to do by the time that he retires.
What do you mean, three pages of? What are you talking about?
Any exaggeration. You have a long list of things that you instructed him to get done, in addition to Chief Mitchell, in addition to Jess, in addition to Brent, Brent, in addition to Ron. And that's the type of things that I think that Earl was speaking of at the beginning, where we under the age on you that it's been an overreach of power, so.
It's not an overreach of power, Chris. I, I write things down because I don't remember anything. It's things that people have already brought up. It's not a, it's, it's something that they've brought up and I just ask them about it. It's not a task list. It's three pages for me. This is-
They're taking it as a task list, and-
Taking it as a task list.
I think you're creating a hostile word that our, if our employees, so they're being threatened because you're asserting your power to and those what you want out of the council wants.
Could you guys take this off the line?
No, this is, this is important for the public to hear, unless you don't think so.
Well, the arguing out there is getting annoying. You know, our meetings are going longer, longer, longer because you guys are constantly arguing.
So Victoria, from the one that had posted recently on a meeting site, that you do not think the board should have sat down over a cup of coffee with someone and discussed something, that it should be a public meeting?
Actually, I think she said she discussed it on social media instead of in person with the person.
I just think we're all tired of hearing the arguing. These meetings get longer and longer and longer. Nothing gets accomplished.
We don't have to.
Talking about the same things over and over.
And you don't like the topic of discussion because we are trying to figure things out with five different sort of opinions.
I don't think we can do that.
You're a very vulnerable leader in a time that you're disturbed by the transparency conversations that we're having up here. That's all about it.
Well, again, I think you're all out of line, and we're all a little bit tired of hearing the arguing.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. We heard your comments. Thank you so much. I, I think that there is a motion from Earl on the table.
It is really.
I think he made one before that, sorry. Did you make a motion on the budget?
Earl made a budget, uh, Earl made a motion to do the budgets. I'm just, I'm sorry. Can you say it one more time? What is it that you want to do with the department budgets? You want to-
At the budget hearing, you have each department head meet with us and have a set budget for each department.
Okay, set budget. Earl made a motion to set a budget for each department head. Is that, is that okay to say that? Does that capture your thing?
Where you don't have to be department head for each department in general.
I'm sorry. Do you want to set, set a budget for each department head?
Sure, that's how you want to order.
Okay, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Curtis, second? Any more discussion on setting a budget for a department head?
So this budget that we're, we're speaking of is kind of being a line is a story of progress, is that correct?
Right.
No, that's not, I'm sorry, that's, that's not the motion on table. It's to set a budget for the department head.
Okay, then it was set, good.
Didn't have anything to do with a working, working idea.
Okay, I have a further discussion about that.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. So Gina, make sure you set a budget for department heads. Okay. Okay, go on, Curtis. Would you like to, I'm sorry. If you have a motion or agenda that you'd like to talk about restricting council members to speaking with department heads, I would like you, please put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Based on our, based on our-
If that's okay.
Based on our rules of procedure, I don't have that any time.
Uh, no, we have to follow this agenda.
No, based on your rules, I don't want you to speak there. I am allowed to present anything at any time.
Uh, if you would like to change the agenda, first you have to give a majority of the board to add to the agenda. That's what the rules of procedure are during a meeting. That's what the rules of procedure are during a meeting. If it's before the meeting, only two people, you, you are the one that made that.
I agree with you, at the end of the meeting, then we'll see if there's a majority to add something else to.
Add, okay, great. Okay, next is.
Sorry, I'm just clarifying, so that motion that he made, we're just.
I'm gonna make it, I mean, like you said, it's a minority.
Thank you.
Next is the historic district.
So the information, it's kind of us last meeting, uh, we were told that we had, the town council could not do away with the ordinance, that it was strictly with the commission. But then after that, Bridget found some other information about. Maybe we all should have been involved in it, I don't know, but Bridget found out some information, Bridget, please tell.
So at our last council meeting, the, the board, the council voted to put a moratorium on COAs for the historic district. That was one thing they said, and we since found out that, well, we initially found out that this council did not have the authority to make a moratorium on the Historic Preservation Commission, because that would be equivalent to taking their authority away. Um, and we gave them that authority in the ordinance that was passed, and so we were told that that could not happen. Um, so we then started to try to figure out what was our authority. Obviously, one of our authorities for the Historic Preservation Commission is to be able to appoint and remove people from the commission as we see fit. That is one authority. But we don't have the authority to take away the COA idea, and I'm also told that we do not have the authority to change or alter any of the guidelines, that that authority lies with the Historic Preservation Commission. So. So the map is the most important thing, so what, what everyone thought about the Historic Preservation Commission is that the town Brookfield approved the map, which is, looks like this, right? Everyone thinks this is the map of the Historic Preservation Commission, because this is the nineteen seventy-five map. And in fact, there has not been an ordinance signed by the town council that establishes the local historic district. So what was passed in December fourteenth of, of twenty twenty-one is the, the board signed a resolution that talked about blighted properties. And that was a requirement to submit the preserving main street grant. It was a, you, they had to, they had to declare the main street area as blighted, and they included a map with it. That map was, was the nineteen seventy-five national register map. And so people saw that resolution, and they automatically assumed that that resolution established the local historic district, and it didn't. And we found that out by somebody very close to us that was able to read, which I guess the rest of us can't read. The resolution clearly says it's a blighted area, and has, it does not mention anything about this is the recommendation to establish the local historic district. And so the, the council actually never approved the lo, the local historic district, if that makes any sense. Uh, which means that, that the Historic Preservation Commission doesn't have the map to establish any codes for anybody, although they've been doing that since last year, whatever the time was. So what needs to happen at this point, and, and the ordinance that was signed two weeks after this resolution was signed, that established the Historic Preservation Commission, it actually said in there that the commission will recommend a local historic district to the council.
Map.
Map, sorry, district, map, to the council for approval, and it must be approved in an ordinance. So that hasn't happened yet. And so I would think that we would just ask the Historic Preservation Commission to establish, give us a recommendation on establishing a local historic district and a map. And then we need to submit that to them, to, to get an ordinance together for us to sign. And for the application, everyone in the room, ordinances must be read at two meetings, whether there's a fee signed or not. Um, so we have to read this at two different meetings, once the ordinance is submitted to us. So that means all the files that were approved, what is it, six or something, were approved erroneously. Um, and the fees for the permits were charged erroneously. And so it, it's my, my view that we will have money back to those, twenty-five dollars to these people that submitted it, and we need the local historic, we need the commission to start to submit a map to us, so that we can approve it.
So you're saying that because we didn't, the HPC not have the authority to charge, they should pay back?
That's my suggestion, it's not law, I just think we, we, we made people, the people that would normally have to get a building permit, that just needed a code, we made them pay twenty-five dollars.
Are we asking the landmarks, because we relied on Jared's written advice that we do not have to have a map? Uh, because we asked him twenty twenty-two via email, and he said, no, you already approved that, you don't need to do it. He's the one who provided the ordinance, and the guy likes to do this anyways. So are we asking the landmarks, because we're paying their contract, they lost you, we get this year, and earlier this year, I advised them not to, because Jared is historically horrible at responding to justice or plus toward information. Uh, he didn't bother to show up at the public commission, we were humble, invited to get information from him. Um, and I would like to have a conversation with any landmarks on one, why they allowed us to set up something that they were supposed to do. I listened to the room erroneously to the point where, um, several people had to wait. And I just figured tonight, they had to wait once to get their COA, and went through several, you know, weeks of stress and undue hardship, in my opinion, had to pay a fee, it's a lot, minimal fee, but it's still a fee, and it was one that probably opposed, in my opinion. Uh, so are you landmarks, would you pay it back?
That, I'm, I completely agree with you, and in fact, I do not know. I mean, that's something that you definitely get, have learned, take a look at the contract and their responsibilities. Um, it is my position only, that Jared thought that resolution, that was that blighted resolution that was passed to support the preserving main street grant was the map, and that's why he told you the map's already approved. That's why he told everybody the map is approved, and everybody regurgitated that statement until Nancy read it and knew where it came from. I did not know, I did not read that.
Are they, right? Supporting documents, the blighted resolution, right?
When Tara was submitted.
When Tara was filing the planning application for the, I think for the planning section, the application, that was one of the pieces that was needed in the application, was to refer the P C V D. Was a statement of.
So just one thing to add with this, part of the town's agreement with Okra to get observing to grant, there's responsibilities in here. It just says that the town shall adopt a local ordinance, a local preservation ordinance, which we did. Formation of a preservation commission, we did that. And designation of a downtown local historic district by Marshall, we did not do that, it was not designated. So Andrea Kern, we asked her if we could have an extension, and she said as long as we established a local historic district by June thirtieth, that we would still be in compliance with the preserving shampering, and nothing, we wouldn't, you know, there'd be nothing happening with that, because that was one of the questions to expose, what is the implications of what we're doing?
Since we have the opportunity to read all those guidelines, I would, I would like to send a recommendation to HPC by his board, but our thoughts would others, here, to be, it would not be the entire town of Brookfield, I think, since we have the ability to do this.
I don't think we can do anything to dial them.
No, I'm not saying with the map, but what we would like the map to be is not the entire town of Brookfield, would be my opinion.
Absolutely.
And then I'm also, I would at least like to make a request, that they look at the guidelines, I know Jared said via email that, that HPC cannot differ from, or go away from the guidelines that we presented already, that is now that he's personally said to me on multiple occasions.
I think that on video, that he said the exact opposite first, and he said to you during the first meeting on December fourteenth, was that because this is, I think I put it in our story, um, because this is new, it would be great if the council got together with the commission and kind of came up with guidelines that are mutually approving, and if something doesn't fit with Roto, that we would take that out. Um, he, he presented an idea that it was supposed to be kind of a mutual thing, so we're starting this up. But I will say that the town council on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two did vote to approve the guidelines as it is, even though Grant Lee said during that meeting, you don't have to do a legal requirement, there was still a motion said, and it was unanimous, that the guidelines are approved as is. So the town council actually did approve them, but they didn't have to. So the other part is that, the other thing Jared said is that if the HPC deviates too much, and Brady said the same thing, too much from the guidelines, the Indiana landmarks says that they're so far away from their standard that they don't want to have to be, they, they can say, I don't want to be involved anymore, which means they pull their support from us, which means it's a violation of the preserving main street grant. Because we have to have an HPC, and we have to have a staff person that supports us. After the preserving main street grant is a little very close out, would be an opportunity, I think, to relook at the guidelines if we don't have the Indiana landmarks on line, again, that's my opinion, that is not, um, for sure. But I think that that would be the appropriate time to change the guidelines, if the council so desires.
And if I read the ordinance correctly, it has to come from the commission on changing the guidelines.
So it is my understanding that the guidelines are within the purview only of HPC, and they do not have to get the council's approval on anything, on any change.
I take commission.
The commission, I'm sorry, the, yes, I'm sorry.
Do we set the line structure of the HPC? Because they keep, they keep telling people that it's the town council, like, who knows, right?
It is.
So are we required to have lines?
No.
So there are fines in the ordinance, it says fines.
I know.
And, and when I asked how these fines get enforced, and she goes, you enforce them just like every other fine, every other code violation type fine. But we can also not enforce them, not enforce the fines.
That's probably what's getting at.
Yeah. If we set a choose, if there's a violation, we can discuss it then.
So you're not picking the choose, or you don't find who you're not?
Wow, no, I said we would discuss it when it comes up, Earl, that's all.
Right, that's what I'm saying, you don't find this person, but not this person.
I'm sorry, that, that issue is not really whether the council is tired, I can't really count on that, I just trying to give people information. Does anybody have questions, does, does, I know it's not the end, but does public have questions about this? And if you could, if you could please try to limit it to two minutes, we're, we're not even done halfway, I don't put our agenda to.
So I have to turn on that mic, just hold that button down until it turns green, please. Maybe?
Yeah.
Is it green?
Yes, no, it's black now, maybe I turned it off, oh, there, maybe? Now it's clear, she's red, green, red, green. It doesn't know.
Got a hammer to drop it, didn't it?
Maybe, that's right, oh, there it is. Was that part of my two minutes, I'm hard. I'm confused, so, very confused. Okay, so what, what I'm getting at here, I, I've been doing a lot of thinking about this, and I've talked to some of yous, but we had a board that got us into, they needed, they needed, they had the grant, they had to put what Bridgette, what you just all said in, okay? They took our property, supposedly put it in a district. Our names are on the deed, our names are on our taxes that we pay, um, without our knowledge or consent, without my authorization, without my signature. They literally took our property rights.
Do you have a question, ma'am?
I do, so what I'm saying is, is now the commission, you're saying, um, can still make these guidelines. You guys are going to decide the map, am I?
They're going to write a map, and we are going to approve the map.
So they can write.
Or not, Bridget.
Okay.
We, we can not prove the map they sent to us, sim factor. And they have to generate another map to come before us.
Okay.
So it's not.
So you don't know if the map is going to include some of the houses that it already has, or the district that it already has?
I'm pretty sure that this council wants to limit its main street, so if it includes a lot of houses, we just return it. I'm not speaking for the board, I'm just, we are, we would, if we don't like the map, we will turn it, just like John said. But if we don't approve the map and ordinance, regardless of July thirtieth, we are default of the preserving main street grant.
Okay. So when we're here, we will be able to know what's going to be on that map?
I guarantee you, ma'am, whatever is recommended, the, I, we will, I will be filling the HPC meetings from now on, and I will put it on out, so everybody knows what's happening at them. But there will be full disclosure of all decisions and conversations at the HPC.
Pretty clear.
Right now, the, the important thing is that there is no district. So there are just COAs, so that anyone is eligible to do anything on the outside of their house, as long as it falls with the county code. That's the important thing, until this board passes the map, so if you have a project and you want it done on the outside of your house, so.
Well, it's not even the project right now, the bottom line is, is that I don't want my property rights taken away, period. It's my house.
Yes, ma'am, we, we've heard a lot of it, we understand that, like I said, I'm pretty sure the majority of the board would, would vote not to have the whole town. I can't speak for them, it's not a vote, but I, I'm pretty sure we heard you, and it's very clear.
Why, no, you heard me.
That the townspeople, well, I'm saying that metaphorically, that the townspeople don't like, we, I think, I believe so, I agree with it, but I'm going to go over how the townspeople want to do that.
And I did want to tell you that there is such a thing as preservation easement, and that does protect the houses, they cannot be torn down. I have any information right here, if you want any afterwards, I can give it to you, because I printed it all out.
Okay, thank you so much for your comments. Any other questions about the historic district? And so can you, what can you say, do you want to ask that, you have two minutes as well?
My name's Brandy Sucey, and my question is, last meeting, they had made a comment that if we get pulled out of the commission and everything, and go against the grant, we have to pay the grant back. The comment was made by one of the board members that we would get property taxes raised to pay this grant back. We could, where's that money, if the projects haven't started yet, that money should be sent there, and it should just be put back, not charged to all the property owners to make up that money.
I actually, I tested my first, can you tell us how much money we've already spent on the preserving main street?
I think that there's a, sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I mean, there's approximately one point four, one point five million.
That we've already spent?
No.
No? That we've already spent, all the checks are already.
So I can't remember off the top of my head, but I mean, I know we've paid a hundred and some thousand ratio for, but this was in the planning phase. And we have not got the lease funds yet for the construction phase, and we didn't pay our recent administration fees.
We just paid them.
So, right, so it's not going to be the two, it's not going to be that, what I'm really saying, I guess, but again, so this. going to be saying, I guess, but again, so this was the first invoice that we paid for ratio just this evening to advance that money, that's twenty-seven thousand of those construction phase funds.
What did they get paid to, is my question?
They get paid to.
Our debt?
Administrator of the grant, to design, to the, we have two phases, we, the planning phase of the grant, which is over, and the, we have the construction phase, so we move it to construction documents, services, uh, by the architect firm that we have contracted with to do those services. Um, they're also cooperating in the bids and working with other, um, general contractors and subcontractors, so they're contracted to do that. So the, i- if we were to buy the grant, um, and Oprah, both of those funds, not all too many dollars are going to be paid back, because not all too many dollars have been given out. And then, and there's also this communication, this information, that the business owners get that money directly, it never goes to the business owners directly. Uh, it goes to the town of Brookville as the partner, uh, and the town of Brookville pays that out through the funds that Oprah gives to the town, but any event that we were to default on our agreement with Oprah, we would be obligated to pay back what has been expended out of that grant so far, plus any penalties that Oprah may or may not impose on us as a violation of breaking a grant agreement.
But I think you were saying is that we're not there, and I'm very confident that the HPC and this council will be able to figure out a good solution, that we don't even have to worry about that kind of stuff, we're not, we're not at that point yet.
But if it does get to that point, all of us who never asked or had an opinion on this are going to get charged for it and have to pay it?
That's kind of additional charge, it just comes out the, it comes out the taxpayers' money, uh, so as if you are getting charged for it, then you won't see the charge under.
It won't up our property taxes, is what I'm asking.
We have to pay for something, so if we pay for it from our, our offers, it just takes away those services that were already derived.
Okay.
Often, it impacts the taxpayers, that's why I talked to the last time, we were having that commission before we made a decision, I did have our strike agreement.
Oh.
Thank you.
We, we, we married very close to our, who did the grant, I guess.
But the people didn't.
It does twenty of the elected people, I mean, the, the people can't react when we reveal, um, you know, if you like us to do a job, and if you don't like to do what we do, in two years, I'll be up, two years, several other people will be up, in four years, somebody else will sort of, that's your ability as, as a taxpayer as a voter to elect the people that you want. So if you're dissatisfied with the level of, um, performance that we're doing, then you're perfectly positioned to vote for office or to vote off of the next election cycle. But it's just, we, the council, the formal council made a decision, uh, of what we have with us for Brookville, I still think that it is long-term going to be great for Brookville, we just have to after a few pickups, um, and, uh, thank you.
Are there any other questions? I mean, I, I think the only thing that I'd like to do is make a vote, ask the HPC to give us a, a map for approval, unless somebody wants to amend that motion or?
Do you need a vote? Do you need motion to vote?
I probably don't. I mean, is that how everybody feels?
Yeah.
Have them do it.
I agree with that.
Do you want to?
Yeah.
Give any advice on what you want the map to look like?
No.
No one major.
Yeah.
No more than a street. In the, in the grant service area, because I agree with this, last time, he signed the service area that he's to accept Main Street, so I should be able to follow this for a time, twenty-one to help receive funds. So I would say whether the initial agreement was with the grant, that service area is delivered to the HPC's control.
I mean, we can.
What was that?
You can, you can say.
From Main Street, from Third Street to. Adrian. It was Adrian Street.
Yeah, so you're asking, or, okay. What names were?
Third, Third and.
That's who could apply?
Yes.
Very, yes, yeah. Was, actually technically.
And if anyone was eligible to apply, they're eligible to take this into consideration, that's fair.
So it's a good way to recur.
So, uh, the courtesy was, uh, technically, the bill, the commercial bill was qualified was connecting from Second Street through Main Street.
Second Street? Second Street or Third Street?
Second Street.
The Second Street, the Mr. Ruth would be in.
I think it was Third Street plus one, it was second street. There was an exception. But they weren't, they received it, so I keep it out. My, so if I were, I'll put it to more or less than everyone's ear.
What do I have in motion?
I'll do it, it was just, the motion leave, that more recognition, same case.
Do you mind not giving in motion, just so we can kind of all get our ideas out there, because we all have different ideas.
Then, then we'll voice our discussion, so my motion, um, I mean, is.
Come on.
Bridget, I'm committed for whether I'm able to have an opinion. And so you can ask me to have the motion, I'm still going to, so we can go with it, and then you can go against it.
Please.
Five seconds, so we can go back and snap, just trying to make it easier, just trying to make it easier.
And then if you're affected by the town.
Please, thank you, Mark.
And the motion is to ask the HPC to consider putting back the map, that includes only Main Street for Third Street through Tenth Street, which was, and assisted with the grant, October.
I'm sorry, uh.
Well, Chuck's not here, so all in favor? All opposed? I mean, I'm opposed because I'd just rather hear from them, that's all. I'm not opposed to the idea.
Two percent.
Then, they, they're free to do anything they want.
It's a requirement.
I know.
It's a recommendation.
I mean, I, I know, I'd just rather hear what their opinions are too. Okay, motion passed, so.
Can you do me on the sixteenth, thirty-one, ten, five, top?
So it's Third, Eight, Eight, is that what you said?
Third, Tenth.
Third, the tenth.